Okay, let's call the meeting in order. Aaron, would you do the roll call?
Jake Mary.
Here.
Lee Dashlet.
Here.
Casey Boor.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Mitch Wedberg.
Here.
Scott Meverden.
Here.
John Ortley.
Here.
Kevin Schmidt.
Here.
Yeah, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. I would like a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Swedberg, seconded by Ortley.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved as submitted. The approval of the meeting minutes to the April 3rd, April 18th reorg and the April 18th regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. Next item is public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward and make any comments? Okay.
Good evening. I'm John Havick. I live at 305 Fremont Street here at Algoma. I'm here this evening to make comment to the city itself. First of all, this is my first meeting, being out of office as a first ward alder, and I didn't really get a good opportunity at the last meeting to say thank you to the voters of the first ward for placing their faith in me for two terms. I really appreciated it. John, you've got a great ward to take care of. The other thing is, is that the city administration, you've got an incredible administration at this point. You've got Matt Murphy, you've got, you know who you have. I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for their help and support during my time as an alder. They are truly a professional group. If I didn't, if I didn't have an answer, or if I didn't have a solution, I went to the person in charge, who was either Matt or his predecessor, let them know where the issue was, where I thought the issue was, and the folks in charge of those areas came through every time. They may not have fixed the issue as far as the constituent was concerned, but at least they gave me a full and fair answer to all of the questions that allowed me to educate the constituents that I represented. So with that, I just wanted to have the opportunity to say thank you to all. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to come forward and make any comments? Anyone from the public wanting to come forward? One last chance. Anyone coming forward? If not, then we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, is consideration of bills and conference attendance. Does anybody get a chance to look at the bills? Is there any questions or comments that you'd like to say about them?
Davis-Adnison LLC.
Adnison-Davis LLC?
Yeah.
That's formerly Davidson Helda.
Okay.
Attorney fees.
Okay.
I'd need for twenty.
Okay.
Okay.
That was it on mine, my list.
I'd make a formal motion to approve the general bills and credit card payments as presented.
Motion by Scott, seconded by John.
Roll call.
Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Lee Dashlet.
Yes.
Jake Mary.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Casey Boor.
Yes.
John Ortley.
Yes.
Mitch Wedberg.
Yes.
Okay, is there any conference attendance?
There's conference attendance for Fire Chief Tom Ackerman to attend the Wisconsin Fire Chief Conference in Wisconsin Dells in, what's like, late June.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is that one, just all in favors?
Yep.
Say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. That is approved. Okay, next item is committee reports. Does anyone have any questions about any of the committee reports that were presented? Any questions? If not, could I get a motion to approve the receipt of the committee reports as submitted?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The committee reports are approved. Old business, is there anything for old business?
There is none.
Okay. New business? The tourism promotion budget letter and accommodation tax proposal?
So included in your packet is the budget letter approved by the Tourism and Promotion Commission. They're required to submit that to the city council. They've also included who their makeup of that commission is, and then a letter requesting to keep the room tax rate at six percent.
Okay, is there any questions or discussion about that?
I believe we need a motion to just accept the receipt of that budget and then a motion to keep the room tax at six percent.
Okay, would somebody make that motion?
Okay, we want to do one motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to accept the receipt of the budget and then to keep the room tax at six percent, please. And moved by Ortley.
Second.
Second by Swedberg.
Okay, and would you do a roll call since we're talking about a tax?
Sure. Ortley?
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary? Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Scott Meverden.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next thing is a temporary Class B license?
Okay, give me just one second here to address this. Okay, so included in your packets was a memo from me showing you all of the organizations that have requested an application for a Class B license. So we have the Algoma Fire and Rescue Association. They are looking to have a Class B license, which is beer only, for the car show put on by the Community Improvement of Algoma. We have the Algoma Penguins Baseball Club. You can see all the dates listed there for Perry Field. Again, those are all Class B licenses for beer only. Algoma Boys Little League has two requests for Perry Field and Peterson Park, and all of the days are listed. Again, those are just the Class B beer licenses.
I'm going to make a formal motion to approve the Class B licenses as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That is approved. Next item is the mayor's appointments and comments. There are three of them. On the utility commission for Dave Recle, appointed, extended to 2027, the Park and Recs Committee for Wayne Schmidt, and Public Works Committee for Wayne Schmidt.
So the one with the utility commission, per the commission and our rules on that, I had the year wrong for the last special meeting. I had it to 2026, it's supposed to be 2027. And then the other one would be for Wayne Schmidt to be on the committees as a council rep on the Parks and Rec and Public Works. So I'm looking for a motion.
Formal motion?
I think we should do them separately.
Okay.
Just so that way, if Wayne would like to go down the first one.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'll make a formal motion to move forward with the appointment extension for 2027 for Dave Recle.
Second.
Motion by Meverden, seconded by Kevin Schmidt.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It is approved for Dave Recle's extension. Okay, then you want to do the other two separate?
That can just be one.
They can be separate, okay.
I'll make a formal motion to, with the mayor's appointments, for Wayne Schmidt to serve both on the Park and Rec Committee as well as the Public Works Committee.
Second.
Abstained.
So a motion made by Meverden, seconded by Mary, with Wayne Schmidt abstaining.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The appointments are approved as submitted. Okay, the administrators report.
A couple of things, just to bring everybody up to speed. Redevelopment area number two, CDBG grant has now been closed out, but we are waiting now for our developer. Should be late May, early June that we should have our results back of where they fall into place with their tax credits. Obviously, we're all hoping for early May because it just kind of expedites it along a little bit, but, you know, you can't push that part about it. When they get it, it's probably going to be closer to early June when we have that. But the public hearing will be scheduled, or is set for May 9th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in regards to TID number three. That is the plan amendment for the Summit Beach area out south of town where we will be doing some stormwater work and a sanitary sewer upgrade, lift station upgrade, and possibly a second stormwa, I'm sorry, sanitary upgrade. Like I said, that'll be May 9th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. But that whole plan is, you can find on the city's website in the redevelopment authority section of the city of Algoma's website for anybody that would like to know what's all going on with that. Police department update. The city of Algoma currently will be, is still working with the Kewanee County Sheriff's Department. Thank you to the Kewanee County Sheriff's Department. They've been covering shifts here in the city that have not been filled, and we will continue to work on moving forward with hiring police officers to backfill our vacant positions here in the city. So still working on that. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers project. I actually was in Sheboygan last week, middle of last week. The city of Sheboygan and the Corps of Engineers federal project there, they're just starting their Phase Two project, which is encapsulating their peers, which is a more or less cookie cutter project of our Phase One project. So I went down there, met with some guys from the Corps, and kind of looked at that project. It's kind of just getting kicked off, and they're just getting started here. They have some of their armor wall sheeting put in now. We are hoping, the way it sounds with talking to the Corps, that they will be here with a full plan design probably in July's meeting, with expectations to leave this meeting, and it would go to bid right after that, and bid results back for August, and probably contractually, paperwork, everything else, that they're looking to have all completed, all executed by the end of September, that we would know who our contractor is for the harbor wall project. Couple updates with that. One of the things that I'm working very closely with them is part of our project here in the city of Algoma is, they need to lift our pier head light, the lighthouse, about six feet off the ground, and redo the structure underneath it, obviously, with concrete. While that's being performed, I'm working with the Corps to try to get our painting upgrade done while they're out there in the moving and shaking. It will not leave the north structure of the pier, but because they're out there with the barge work and everything that is entailed, the lifting it up, if we could at that time possibly have it painted as part of this grant project that we have going on here. So that's one thing. I know the city owns the pier head light. We don't own the wall that it sits on, but I'm trying to work with them to see if we can possibly get that done or with some little monies in kind with the city while that work is being done, performed out there. So, just to give an update, I don't have any, obviously, commitment yet, but it's something that they're willing to sit at the table and listen to anyway. So, that's what I have with that. And then, like everybody knows, but we talked about it, 2023 utility and street project will be on 2023 Division Street. Start on Jefferson Street and go to Fremont Street for 2023. And 2024 has also been bid out as all one package. That will go from Fremont to Navarino, and also portions of Frank Street that'll be done in 2024. So that's all been, and we are working on with executing contracts currently at this time with the contractor, as Peters Concrete was the lowest bidder again this year, and we'll continue to move forward, execute those contracts. Right now, talking with Peters, very high level, it sounds like probably early, mid-August to get started on that project. And with, you know, that it would be blacktop yet this year before blacktop plants start to shut down in this area. So, that's all I have. Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then, anything for the agenda for the next meeting? Be sure to get it to Matt or Aaron so we can get it on the agenda. Our next meeting will be Monday, June 5th, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. The next item is a motion to go into closed session.
Looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility relating to conducting interviews and recommending a candidate for the chief of police position.
So moved.
Moved by Meverden, seconded by Ortley.
Okay, we do a roll call?
Meverden.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boor.
Yes.
Mary. Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.